Bones off.
Are you ready up front?
I'm turning the recorder off.
It's important, we've had a meeting or two where the recording didn't get turned on.
We are recording.
All right, we're live. All right, we have several things to do before we get to the council meeting. We'll see if anybody has anything to say. First, we have a public hearing. All persons are reminded, several public hearings, are reminded that this session is being recorded on tape for the preservation of records and you're asked when called upon to give your name, address, and interest in the matter before the council. We have the discussion of the constant yield tax rate. We have the discussion of ordinance 519, which is an ordinance for the levy of taxes for the fiscal year 2018, which begins on July 1st. We have a discussion of ordinance 520, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget of the town of Hampstead for the period of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. And a discussion of resolution 2017-02, a resolution regarding the increase of water rates for the fiscal year of 2018. So, first thing, constant yield, tax rate. Basically, the state, for whatever reason, said that if we were to maintain our tax rate at 22 cents, property rates, property values are going up, therefore, the town would get more money. In order to supposedly get the same amount of money to the dollar, we'd have to decrease our tax rate from 21, from 22 cents per $100 of assessed value to 21.38 cents. We have no intention of decreasing our property tax rate to that amount. We're keeping it the same this year at 22 cents. So, that's part one of it. Anybody have any comment related to the tax rate? I can tell you, I think I've got a few notes. So, our tax rate, 22, it's the last increase was in 2016, when we increased it from 20 to 22. Before that, it was 2002, when we raised it the last time, I think from 19 to 20. Manchester's at 21.6, Sykesville's at 35, Tawnytown's at 37, Westminster's at 56. So, I think we do a pretty good job of spending people's money. There's a saying that goes back a few years, that we squeeze the buffalo off a nickel. And comparatively, which is what we do, we look at, our tax rate seems reasonable and it currently meets our needs as far as our funding goes. Any comment related to the tax rate? Going once, twice, three times? Stacey, you're not putting your hand up, you're fixing your hair? All right. And then, the ordinance for the levy of taxes for the fiscal year of 2018 goes hand-in-hand with the constant yield, discussion of the budget, the adoption of the annual budget, and discussion of the resolution related to water. I guess a few things that are going on related to the bud, related to the budget. There's also a business personal property tax, which stays at 55 cents. Comparatively, Manchester's at 46, Sykesville's at 87 and 1/2, Tawnytown at 80, Westminster at $1.10. So, I think we comparatively go pretty, go pretty easy on our businesses. Amusement tax at 7 percent, that stays unchanged. All these, particularly the tax rate related to the property tax was advertised in the merchandiser and in the town website and in the Northern News. One of the big drivers in income other than property taxes, that's the local share of income taxes that we get, which is a reflection of the overall economy, and the amounts we're receiving this year shows a 5% increase. So, it looks like Hampstead and its citizens are pretty affluent. The more you earn in taxes, and you check that little box that you live in Hampstead, a share of what you pay to the state comes back to the town, doesn't add to your tax. So, that's a good thing that that's going up and reflects that the economy's humming along pretty well. Revenue's budget-to-budget are increasing 2.9% actual from last time to what we project for the last full year of actual we have is 63016, that shows actually a small decrease. Some of the drivers on the other operating side, there's a stormwater remediation fee, which go back with Roger and Kevin and Tammy quite frequently. While the rain taxes repealed, this fee's ongoing to meet EPA and MDE. That's the Maryland Department of the Environment mandates. The mandate results basically in $60,000 of expense to the town, which results in a 1% of the property tax rate. Highway user funding is a big, big component of the income. We have $176,000 this year in the budget, includes a one-time grant of $129,000. Historically, when you look back in '06 to '09, which was the last time these highway user money was fully funded, our budget was typically around $293,000 for paving and replacing local roads. It got as low as $24,000 in 2010 during the downturn, when the, when the, basically, they raided the Treasury Transportation Fund to fund operating expenses. Governor Hogan's indicated his continuing support for the Highway User Fund. Hopefully, we can flip that around. So far, he's supported it, but the two Mikes, the Speaker of the House and the Senate President, Bush and Miller, have not. Employees got a 3% increase based on their good work and the performance they do and what's within line in the other towns in Carroll County, and we'll hear what good work many of them are doing later on in the meeting. Water, we're going to do an 8% increase this year. We continue to increase water. It's a capital-intensive business, and over the years, we've brought it up to speed, I guess what you'll hear about later on as well. Our water rates are on par with other towns in Carroll County. Our appropriation permit is good till 2020? I'm looking at 2021, looking at Roger Steger back there. And then, we've gotten some new technology between putting the, the new water line on Main Street, which, you know, cost us a pretty penny but was overdue, and the technology we have to detect leaks, our water usage is down over 10% because of the efficiency at which the system operates. Forecast for the horizon for our town, there's going to be a lot going on with Main Street. Most all of that expense is, is related to the state, not to the town. We are going to replace some lamps as you get further along, and then, we're going to do some other nicer finishes, but the bulk of that expense is going to be on the state. Positive outlook, Fuchs is coming online this year. We'll get a full year of property tax out of them. Oakmont Overlook is online for a full year. That was 25 houses that were sold within 18 months, and so, they'll get a full year. And then, we have a new residential development. If you've all seen, seen the dirt moving on the north end of town, which will continue to hopefully bump the property tax side up a little bit, and then, as people inhabit those houses, will add to the population and to the, and to the taxes that we get on the, on the personal side, that we get the share of. Capital fund, compared to prior years when we were replacing the water line, this is relatively sparse. I mean, there's pump house, the system expansion that we're continuing to finish off in the north end next year, $200,000. We're buying two maintenance trucks, a utility one ton and a dump two and 1/2 ton, which we're splitting between the water and general funds, which we do with those, one police car. And we have some road repairs over above what we get reimbursed from the state for about $100,000. Other than that, it's a pretty benign capital budget. The biggest unknown that's out there, that's in a to-be-determined column, is $1 million to replace the Lower Beckleysville Water Main and some other 1936 piping that still remains in the ground. I'm being told by Kevin and Roger that the Water Main from, Lower Beckleysville was from the 1970s, and as near as I can tell, there wasn't a whole lot of good stuff built back then. They were always trying new stuff and it didn't work out. And we've got to continue to keep an eye on our north tower and our Panther Drive Water Tower, because at some point, they need to be sandblasted and then keep the repairs up, so that we can continue to stay ahead of any deferred maintenance. So, that's it for the budget. Questions, comments? A lot at you, a lot of numbers. I'll give Tammy and Cheryl credit and council credit. We had a budget meeting. We have an 11-page spreadsheet that we just basically go through it line by line, lots of different years laid out, and we've developed a pretty good track record and a pretty good history as to how we spend the people's money. Going once, twice, three times? All right. Hopefully, you're not too bored. We'll close this public hearing and we'll move on to the regular meeting of the town council. Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the opening prayer and the pledge allegiance. Dear Lord, we submit ourselves to you as your servants and the servants of the people of Hampstead who've placed their trust in us. Please allow every word that is spoken and every action taken to be in the best interest of Hampstead. Your Lord, bless this meeting and our town. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tammy?
Mayor Nevin?
Here.
Councilwoman Duff?
Here.
Councilwoman Renahan?
Here.
Councilwoman Rourke?
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
Thank you. Minute approvals from the council meeting on May 16th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? When you're ready, Tammy.
I have a question for you. So, the, the updated minutes, did you hand those out to everybody? Oh, you should have mentioned, the ones that included the, the results of the election.
They're not in your packet?
No. So, let's back up. The results of the election were not in the original copy of the minutes. I notified them today that...
They're here. Am I?
Well, the packet we got didn't have them, so we're good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, for our Main Street revitalization project, or streetscape, whatever you want to call it, the notice received was issued to CJ Miller on Tuesday, June 6th, with a start date of June 20th. At that point in time, CJ Miller was typically at 30 days to prepare for your start date. So, CJ Miller will get the necessary paperwork together and logistical setup prior to any construction work that may begin. We, myself and Kevin Hand, attended a pre-construction meeting today with State Highway. You had State Highway, BG&E, the BG&E's vendor, CJ Miller, and of course, the town. And it ran very smoothly. Everybody seemed to be on the same page. They all want to have a strong partnership and so we can all work together, and all agreed that communication is very important. So, we're going to work together to see, because CJ Miller has a public relations person, State Highway has a public relations person, so we're going to make sure we, we all get together and we're communicated effectively, because I think that's the most important thing, is people know what's going on. And CJ Miller said at the meeting that they hope to really get started soon, maybe even putting a shovel on the ground by the end of June. I think that's aggressive, because there's a lot of permits they need to pull and things they need to do, but we'll see. The grand, the grand opening for the Public Officials for Fuchs is scheduled, again, as we've said before, for June 30th at 10:00. On that same day, we plan for the town to have a ribbon cutting at 8:30. The ribbon cutting's for the new pump house at North Carroll Farms. And the pump itself, the pump house is finished, the house, the structure is finished, but it's not operational until all the MDE permits are issued, but we still want to let everybody come and, and look at, look at the pump house. And SolarCity, we had the confirmation from them last week that the solar array's up and running, and we just have to secure a lawn company to mow the grass, because our contractor did not feel comfortable mowing around the solar panels. So, we need to hire somebody who typically specializes in mowing around solar panels. So, we have to hire somebody separately for that. And Christie just wanted to know if, ask everybody to send their list of attendees, of who we'd like to attend the, the solar, the solar array and pump house ribbon cutting. For North Carroll High School, as most people know, county commissioners voted four to one to put $6 million aside in their FY 2018 budget to move Carroll County Public School's central office and a portion of the Carroll County Sheriff's Office to the former North Carroll High School building. They've also continually talked about how they want to keep the fields and everything with our rec center, our North Carroll rec. Numbers for the cost of moving the entities came from the estimates provided by the county's Department of Public Works. Commissioner Rothschild was the one vote against the decision, because he believes that the buildings, the building should be sold. On May 20th, retired Howard County Circuit Court Judge Diane Leisure affirmed the State Board of Education's decision to uphold, uphold the Carroll County Board of Education's closing of Charles Carroll Elementary, New Windsor Middle, and North Carroll High School at the end of the 2015 and 2016 school years. So, our appeals have basically been exhausted. We have received our updated water model from JMT. The model requires a special engineering software that, the town staff really doesn't have the engineering expertise to operate it. It's more of an interactive use type of software. So, whenever we need to add a development, or we want to know if we can add somebody to our water system, we can just call JMT and they will get the information together, the parameters that are needed, and run the numbers for us to see if it's something we can accommodate in our system. If anybody, like the mayor had mentioned, North, North Side Estates, they have broken ground, they're working on their stormwater infrastructure. We also had a second pre-construction meeting on June 1st to discuss materials and plans with our inspector, because he was not present at the first meeting. They do have a website for the new homes. If anybody's been on the website, it's jameyershomes.com/neighborhoods, and the models that they'll be selling for the Hampstead development will be on the website. The county, Carroll County has begun their, their Carroll County, or the project for the upgrade of the Hampstead sewer plant. Construction has begun on Lower Beckleysville Road, and then, they'll proceed through various properties to the actual sewer plant. The project will take approximately six months, but most of the, most of the work will be on the shoulder, so they won't shut down Lower Beckleysville. It'll just be a lane change. We had a Board of Zoning Appeals for the off-track bedding facility. The hearing was held on June 7th to decide whether a conditional use for off-track bedding could be granted for the empty suite in the Greenmount Station building that the Maryland Jockey Club would like to lease for an off-track bedding facility. Inadequate parking was the main concern expressed by the public, so the board decided to continue, continue the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing on June 6th at 7:00 PM, at which time, the Greenmount Station will present a plan for more parking, and the board will vote that evening whether to grant the conditional use for that facility. Since it's a continuation of that hearing, there'll be no advertising or public notice requirement, and all the, all the public comments section was concluded at the June 7th portion of the hearing, so there won't be any public comment at the second hearing in July. The Maryland Department of Environment, as we've stated before, three of our stormwater facilities were recently reclassified as high-hazard dams. Something's reclassified as a high-hazard dam. They now require an emergency action plan, or an EAP. Money was allocated in this year's budget to hire a consultant to begin working on an EAP for each dam. However, a new law, Bill HB 125, was signed by Governor Hogan on May 4th, which directly affects the owners of high-hazard dams and significant hazard dams in the state. So, MDE is now requiring that updated EAPs be submitted to the Department of MDE by August 1st. So, starting in 2018, EAP updates are to be submitted to the department by May 1st of each year. I called MDE to request an extension of this deadline. There's, there's no way we can have a plan together by August 1st. So, I was told by Charlie Wallace of MDE to please submit what we can by the August 1st deadline. It is a, they gave you a template, it's 43 pages long, so we can submit, we can like type in contact information. However, there's some, there's, somebody needs to do the analyzing the information, because you have to have the information. When the water reaches a certain level, this is when you start to evacuate, and different, different things that need to be done by someone that specializes in that, which is a lot, a lot of work. So, he said, as long as we have some contact information and show that we're working on it, we should be okay.
Another bureaucratic expense, and I've gone back and forth with Roger and Kevin about this, and what, fine, you can have a, an action plan related to high-hazard dams, but our stormwater management pond down at Roberts Field is now a high-hazard dam, so Marlene's house can get wiped out if it ever were to...
Could I get the state to pay to move me?
And the other two dams are located in the middle of fields and have next to no water holding them back.
Well, how long's it been there? 30 years and it hasn't breached? I think, I think they're good.
So, doesn't mean it won't happen.
Question? The water model?
Yes.
From JMT? As part of the purchase, did they give us the actual model?
They did, but we do not have the software to run it.
So, the...
Oh, we have hard copies of the model itself, but I mean, the actual interactive software program, yes, they did give us copies, but we do not have the software program to run it.
So, it kind of concerns me that we paid them for a, a model that they delivered in a form that we can't view. Whether we have the expertise to run the model or not, I'm surprised we didn't purchase the software along with it, because it's...
Well, it's just like any, well, you know, just like any other software. We can purchase the software, but then, we would have to continually update it as the software's updated, and then, again, we don't have the expertise to gather the data and then enter the data into the software and run the model, so we would still have to call JMT.
I'm, I'm familiar with the technique. So, every time we want it updated, we have to pay more money? Yeah. Okay. Another item, SolarCity, was posed to me today, what are we going to call the solar array? I popped up with a few questions, a few names I liked, but maybe the council should consider it, so...
What's wrong with the solar array?
Well, it's our solar array, and it's a project. I mean, Hampstead Solar Array Project, the Town of Hampstead Solar Array, Town of Hampstead Solar Project, there are a lot of different things. So, we should probably kick it around and come up with a name for it.
Okay.
Just had one quick question. On the county sewer project, I know we gave them permission to cross our lines, but I've noticed that some of the kids are getting pretty close to that at the skate park.
Right.
Are they planning on putting up any barriers there or caution things to keep the kids out?
They were supposed to, if I remember correctly, weren't they, Kevin? They were supposed to put up like a, an orange fencing around all the materials. Are you talking about, you're not talking about the pile of materials, you're talking about the...
Open trench.
Oh, okay.
We should be putting construction fence around that every time it closes every night. Okay. One time I went by, it wasn't there, yeah. In the evenings, yeah.
All right, other questions for Tammy? Marlene, you've got a few things to talk about. You're up.
Well, short and sweet. The farmer's market report for this week. We are two weeks into the market season, and already, we've surpassed attendance numbers from last year by over 500 customers. 2013 was the first year we actually started keeping track of customers, and back then, we had 986 customers the first week. So, we've increased that by almost 2,000 customers in just five years. So, we're very excited about that. And I want to thank Mayor Nevin for officially opening our eighth season of the market by, with your awesome ribbon cutting.
Scissors. Were a great pair of scissors, thank you.
Well, yeah. We, we went to great expense to get those scissors, too. In 2013, we averaged 18 vendors during the year. So far, in 2017, we're averaging 25. I think that speaks to the quality of the market. I think that speaks to the quality of the products that we offer and the loyalty of our customers, so we're very excited about that. We conducted interviews this week with several students who are interested in acquiring service hours by helping at the market. One young man who's going to start Saturday is going to be entering Manchester Valley this fall, and two young ladies will be, are in Shiloh Middle School, and they'll be helping us out. So, Keith Johnson, I have, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Keith. He's our volunteer. He spent 40 years in the Baltimore County School System at Pikesville High School, and 10 of those years, he coordinated the service learning program for Pikesville, and he's been helping us with all these interviews and contacting the students. So, it's just, we wouldn't have been able to do this without him. And thank you to Kevin and Daniel from Public Works for helping us get set up in the morning. You have two handicapped old ladies there, and it, you guys are just awesome in helping us get that, that market house cleaned out and open, so we really truly appreciate that. We're working on lining up participants for our Celebrate the Market Day on July the 29th, which is our only event for the summer, special event. And at last month's Public Planning and Zoning Commission, Jim reminded me, we had an Eagle Scout attend who wanted to start a, help me, a free library...
Little free library.
A little free library, similar to those little pantry that's at St. John's Church. So, we offered him a spot, a free spot at the market, so he could do his fundraising. He, he and his dad came the first Saturday that we were open. I think they did very well. They were raising money with a 50/50 raffle, and I think they will be back about four more Saturdays, and depending on how much money he raises, he may or may not have to come back. So, we're excited to be able to help students in that way and Eagle Scouts with their projects. So, that's all I have. We're just looking forward to the rest of the summer, only 16 left.
Well done.
Thank you.
I've been there both weeks, and it's been a great kickoff to the year, nothing but, nothing but positive.
Thank you for helping us close down, too.
My pleasure. It's been a great, a great kickoff, and just so many people there, it's great to see.
It is fun. It is fun. Thank you.
Wayne?
The Hampstead Trading Station, our flea market, started on Hampstead Day. We had nine vendors, three of them were brand-new. Some of our regular vendors couldn't make it that day, because they were at graduation parties. It went very well, weather cooperated up until a point, so we were pretty pleased with being able to stay there till at least 1:00 before the rain got the better of us. Music in the Park. Our first event was June 3rd. Only thing I have to say is wow. I want to thank Ellen Bowersock, she was part of the Main Street Committee that came up with the idea for doing this project. She got it started, she, she booked the first two bands for us, and the train station more or less took it over as a, as a project. Stacy Gegler, thank you very much for helping us get the permits together, the road closures, all that, that worked out well. Public Works closing the road off. We probably had close to 300 people at the peak. It was very impressive, and I heard nothing but good things about it, not only that night, but the following week, and even up until yesterday. People have been talking about on social media, coming up to me and saying what a great time they had, and so, it looks like it's, it's, it's a good event. Our next one's going to be July 1st. We have In the Red coming. Hopefully, we'll have more food vendors, and I'm looking forward to, to the rest of the season. And I've already gotten emails from other bands that want to be in next year's. So, if this goes very well, and I can talk a certain lovely wife, maybe we'll do it twice a week, or twice a month, so we'll see.
You're pushing it.
Tree Commission, we're still working on the North Carroll Farms Ford project, still looking forward to fall planning, if we can get all our paperwork done, and it's all that.
And kudos on, on the Music in the Park, it was a great event. And it'll be interesting to see when it's 95 degrees like today, how many people come, but we definitely, benefits of the weather benefited from the weather.
I'll sell more coke.
Yes, you will. Jim?
Okay. Planning and zoning commission of Hampstead met on Wednesday, May 24th, 2017. First on the agenda was a request to construct a little free library, as Marlene talked about, at St. John's Methodist Church, 1205 North Main Street. This is an Eagle Scout project being done by Luke DeTota of 2420. He wants to construct this very small library box, sits on a stand, probably about four feet off the ground, hold approximately 20 books, along with a patio he's going to put in with a bench and some flower boxes in front of the church. The reason for the library, in Luke's own words, is to help children in the community get an education over the summer, especially those who might not be able to get to a library. We discussed how far removed the library box and patio should be from the street, so that when they come through with the revitalization project, it doesn't get caught up in it. We approved the little free library, and as Marlene said, we gave him some ideas on how to help with his fundraising, and I'm glad to hear that he did take advantage of the farmer's market and did very well. That's great. Next was a sign request by the Carmel College Antiques at 1021 South Main Street, which is being opened by Faith McCall. She was in Saus previous month to get her business approved, and that was no problem. The signs, 18 inches by 36 inches, old-fashioned look, black ink on white washed wood. It fits right in with the look that we're trying to get on Main Street, so the sign was approved. Last on the local agenda was a request from Doug Harrell to possibly raise the existing structure at 1400 North Main Street. That's the house, the corner lot of 482 and Business 30. It's known as the Fisher Property. Mr. Harrell bought the property at auction with the hope of restoring the house and the property, possibly turning it into some office space and maybe some residential, too. But unfortunately, he bought the house without the ability to see the inside of the house. He showed us some pictures of what the inside looked like, and he told us what the inside looked like, and I'll spare you the details of it, but very easily, the property could have been condemned due to the conditions and the structural integrity of the floors and the walls. There's also a two-car garage and an in-ground pool. The pool's also beyond repair, it's all cracked up, needs to go. As much as we really hate to see these older properties, which were once beautiful homes, go away, but because of the condition of the house and the pool, the commission gave Mr. Harrell permission to demolish the property. And that's all I got.
When's that happening?
Soon, we get approval from the state. BG&E's must get approval on 482 to disconnect the gas lines.
If you need any help, if BG&E's not being responsive, let, let Tammy know, and we'll make a phone call. Tammy's on it. Joe?
Easy. Parks and Recreation, parks are open, they're clean, enjoy them. Have a great summer.
Well done.
I got the easy job this summer.
Rubbity's good.
Yep.
Dave?
Yeah, how you doing? I just wanted to, just let some, some of the council members that weren't there, the town manager. We had the last MML meeting that we had, where it's actually, it was our Carroll County meeting. I had the honor of being the chairman this year of the Scholarship Fund. And we had two young ladies, Bailey Satori and Elizabeth Hanwell, who were picked as the essay writers for the scholarship. I had a great time doing that and got to know the girls and their, their goals and what they want to do in life, so, very nice. And I want to thank Lorena of Care for all the help she gave me back here this year from the town of getting everything together for me and then helping me get the pamphlets printed and the flyers and everything. So I couldn't have done it without her. So I just wanted to give a heads up for that. May 2017, average water usage was 357,000 gallons per day. June 2017, average water usage so far is 385,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total for May 2017 was 5.64. And rainfall total so far for June 2017 is 0.16. Dry spell.
All right. Chief Gossage, you are up. Please report. And for those on the internet or on, on cable, this is the first time that you've seen Chief Gossage deliver a report. He took over for Ken Meekins back in April.
All right, we'll start off with the traffic collisions. We actually had a total of 14 for the month, seven on Main Street, three on parking lots, three on the bypass, and unfortunately, one at the 482 circle. Traffic citations issued, which is everybody's favorite thing. They went a little easy on the folks and they had 119 citations written with a balance of warnings and citations. We had a total of five arrests, four adults, one juvenile, and that included for a threat of arson, second degree assault, possession of CDS, domestic assault, and one adult for DUI. The team completed 106 business checks throughout the Main Street here and also attends school checks. Multiple meetings and events were attended and they include the overdose vigil, the Carroll County Sheriff's Award Ceremony, Small Crossings HOA, and Governor Larry Hogan's visit to Hampstead Elementary School. Sergeant Schwartz attended or was participated in three Honor Guard events as part of the law enforcement officers Unified Honor Guard Group. We had three officers get awards. First one was Lieutenant Gegler. She received the Bob Kirkland Award for her dedication for opiate recovery program.
Stealing my thunder.
I'm going to let you continue with it, sir, I'm sorry. I'll just let it go at that. But she shared that with the entire, with the, with the entire station because everybody had a part in it. I won't go with the other two then because I don't want to steal any more thunder. Does that sign my check? As for training, the officers, I do encourage training. So we did get Officer Vogel in CDS Investigations, Officer Orm in Defensive Tactics School, Officer Wincup, attended the LEEDS program, which is commonly referred to as the Law Enforcement Executive Development Program. And Officer Thornton attended the Critical Incident Training Refresher. During this past month, we were able to get everybody recertified in their CPR and everybody's locks on train now. And the last bit of news is we have moved National Night Out to the Volunteer Fire Department right here on Main Street. That will be on August 1st, starting at 6:00 PM. All right, so I have, Mayor, unless you have something else, sir?
Questions for Chief? You're good.
Thank you, sir.
We have the President of the Fire Department and the Chief. You guys got anything?
As the Chief alluded to, we will be hosted to the National Night Out, presented by the Police Department, so we're looking forward to that. I guess as high as the Main Street events going on around town, we'll be opening up a, the 18th Food Truck Tuesday on the 2nd and 4th Tuesdays of every month. So we'll have a group of food trucks come in and, you know, we'll be vending sodas and water and whatnot.
What time?
October 5th. 5:00.
Very good.
And of course, we have our garden coming up in August, so.
And we have a parade?
We have a parade. Let that add as I would say.
Oh, okay.
Pending permits.
Pending permits, good. All right, my report, there's been a few things going on, as always, the month of May is always very busy. Governor Hogan came in, that was a very efficient day, and he stopped over at Hampstead Elementary. I think he was in and out of there in 45 minutes. But nonetheless, it's great whenever the governor can visit your, visit your town and visit your county. Memorial Day, the American Legion always does a great job putting on their Memorial Day service. And this year, there was the added service that was done over at Gerstel Academy. And several local people were very instrumental in making it happen. So there were two very poignant ceremonies and two very well-done ceremonies, and I was happy to be able to take part in them. Marlene told you about farmer's market, Wayne told you about Music in the Park, Dave told you about the Mount Airy Maryland Municipal League meeting where we got together with our compatriots from Frederick County. Hampstead High had their annual reunion. This year, they added 19, so we're up to 1967, 1957, I think is what it is. You've got to be out of school a long time before you get invited, but it, you know, it goes back to the old school on Main Street and now it's out to the, what was the, now the middle school and the old high school on Route 30. They get invited to that, but there was over 100 people in attendance for that. I stopped in, gave an update. Wayne was also there with me for that. Manchester Valley High School, we presented two $1,000 scholarships. Joe Rennahan and myself, along with Mrs. Cunningham from the school, picked out a handful of applications. Kayla Riley was a winner, she's going to York College of Pennsylvania. And then Lauren Wetzel, and she's going to Miss Accordia University up in Dallas, Pennsylvania, which is near Scranton. Basically, we review these applications, they're all very good, but we view them based on GPA. We look at their extracurricular activities, we look at the need, and then finally, we look at the essays they do and how well-written and thought-out they are. And believe me, there's a couple of years where they're handwritten and they're a mess and those applications don't go very far, but these are all very good. And they were two, two quality winners. It was also interesting to see when I was at Manvau, that the, this is the only year they're going to allow it, but the kids dressed in red were from North Carroll and the kids dressed in blue were from Manchester Valley because they had three years there. But it was a efficient event as well because there were a number of awards to be given out. And then last, the council and I will be headed down to Ocean City in a couple of weeks for the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference. You know, it's not a vacation, we're down there and we go to all these different seminars and the opening sessions and dinners and you just go from one thing to the next and next thing you know, it's Wednesday at noon. So that's my report. Unfinished business, is there anything?
Yes, sir.
So, new business.
I just do have a comment about the MML conference. If anybody would like to help me with the Hampstead booth, that'll be there on Monday and Tuesday.
I thought I was already signed up for that. What am I signed up for?
I know you offered to do it. Did Kristi give you a time? Let me make sure. Who you would like to help, okay.
Or was it the Main Streets? I don't remember, I'm sorry.
It's where, that's where it is.
It is the Main Streets, yes.
Put me down, just tell me what I need.
Okay.
Okay.
Just tell me where to go and when to be there.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
So our employees have been referenced several times during the public hearing in the budget. Chief started talking about it and we have a good amount of them here and it's great to see. And before I get into these first two items, I just want to say in general, you know, I've been around a while and it's, and it's been just neat to see the development of our employees, the development of the town, the helpfulness with which everybody steps up and contributes and does more than their fair share. It's very service-oriented, whether you're in Public Works, Police Department, or you're working here behind the scenes. Over and over again, I've just seen people put in extra effort and they're a big reason why our town is recognized for being a great place to raise family, safest place in Maryland, it just, you know, the list goes on. And, and without these folks and what they do, and, you know, comparatively, you know, they're municipal employees and I will say that, you know, their salaries are, you know, it's not like they're in banking, it's not like they're in real estate, it's not like they're, you know, a doctor in healthcare. They're, they're down there on the ground every day handling just everyday problems that pop up unexpectedly and doing a great job. And now, you know, from the time I've gotten here to what we see today, you know, the leadership and then, and how everybody stepped up, it's very impressive and it makes me proud to be a part of this organization. And I think I speak for everybody up here when, when I say that.
Yes, sir.
Yep. So, first group we want to recognize is the entire Public Works Department. They were named the Maryland Rural Water Association's Water System of the Year. So, you know, when we started out, we, we've had to put a lot of capital into our, into our water system. But when we started out, our water system was a lot more primitive than it is today. But we, you know, we can actually tell you how much our, in a drought situation, how much the wells are getting stressed, how much, how quickly they recharge, our water tanks, the condition they're in, they don't overflow anymore. And the, you know, new pipes in the ground, the system operates much more efficiently than it ever has. So, need to recognize pretty much everybody in the department. They've been led for, I don't know, 30 couple of years by Roger Stager, who's the superintendent. And Roger will be retiring at the end of this year. He doesn't want to make a big deal out of it, but, you know, 30-some years of service and he'll be retiring at the end of the year. And he's led this department and done a great job. And you've got Kevin Han, who's the Assistant Superintendent, who'll be stepping up to become the Superintendent. And Kevin is born and raised Hampstead and, and between Roger and Kevin, the historical perspective is many times very much appreciated. You've got Richard Armakoff, so why don't you guys just come on up here? And I'll give these out as we go.
Would you grab the mic?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
This doesn't have anything to do with you hearing me, but they can hear me at home.
Everybody but one?
James on vacation?
Yeah.
Tennessee.
Tennessee, that's good. All right, so we got Roger Stager. I think that she wants up. Very much. We got Kevin Han. Can you hear me? Okay, we got Kevin Han. We got hopefully somewhat in order. Richard Armakoff. Mike Harris, standing down here on the end. Toby? Who will be stepping up to be the Assistant Superintendent. When I got, first got to know Toby, he had hair and he was much younger.
Jeremy Deter.
Jim, who's on vacation. So I'll give that to you, you guys, I assume? Okay. And our newest guy, Daniel. So gentlemen, thank you very much for everything you've done. We really appreciate it. Couldn't do it without you. Stand tight like you like each other.
Come over here, a couple of them.
Keep moving.
All right, thank you. All right, well done.
All right, part two.
I just want to say one thing, Kevin and Roger, do you know how many water systems throughout the state of Maryland? Because you were Water System of the Year for the entire state of Maryland. Do you know how many?
157 municipal, it's in the MML, so they would all be, if they're registered, would be eligible.
Very impressive.
Okay. So Chief, you want to come up and join me? So the first award is for Lieutenant Stacy Gegler. So somebody else is going to have to take a picture. So it's in recognition and appreciation for your outstanding efforts, hard work and dedication in delivering assistance to those battling abuse, as evidenced by your receipt of the Bob Kirkland Award, so.
We built that?
All right, who knows? And then, next guy's been around for a little while, Officer Clint Thorne. In recognition and appreciation for your dedication in providing superior community services, evidenced by your receipt of the Outstanding Public Safety Recognition Award from the Criminal Justice Club of Carroll Community College.
Remember, he's just a puppy.
And finally, one of the newer guys, author, Officer Jonathan Crenshaw. In recognition and appreciation for your dedication in providing superior community services, evidenced by your receipt of Carroll County Chamber of Commerce's Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award and Outstanding Public Safety Recognition Award from the Criminal Justice Club of Carroll Community College also. So I, we thought it was important to recognize these folks for, for the effort they put in, the extra effort they put in, and, and we sort of put it all together for June here while we're on, on tape and on cable as well. But again, my thanks to everything you guys do every single day. Really appreciate it. All right, now we're on to the volunteer portion. We've got some, it's never easy, you know, it's not like you're making a lot of money to sit up here or to, or even less to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals or the, or Planning and Zoning or the Ethics Commission, but, so we really appreciate the folks who've stepped up and done this. First one is the appointment of Steve Rogers to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of five years. Talked to Steve, he runs the barbecue store down on Main Street. He's retired now from Westminster, so no conflict of interest there. And he's a businessman on, on Main Street and he lives in town. So I think that's an important aspect that we've been missing from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm happy to recommend the appointment of Steve Rogers to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I make a motion to affirm the appointment of Steve Rogers to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term of five years. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next is the reappointment of Vicki Watts to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term of three years. Marlene and I were here to watch the off-track vetting hearing and both of us were very impressed with how Vicki approached it, the questions she asked, and just the general demeanor that she exhibited as, you know, throughout the one and a half hour hearing. So I recommend the appointment of Vicki back to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I make a motion to recommend the reappointment of Vicki Watts to BCA.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And then, lastly, for the reappointments and appointments, I have Cole Brown to the Ethics Commission for a term ending on June of 19. And Cole's stepping up again to continue to serve in this capacity. Thankfully, they've been relatively inactive and hopefully, we keep it that way. Recommend the appointment of Cole Brown to the, what's, Ethics Commission.
I make a motion to recommend the reappointment of Cole Brown to the Ethics Commission for a term ending June 2019.
Second.
Take your pick. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nicole, you're here, so we'll administer your oath. You're going to have to read.
Yeah.
Read after me.
Aye, Coleman Brown.
Aye, Coleman Brown.
Do swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear and affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I'll be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office as a member of the Ethics Commission of the Town of Hampstead.
Execute the office as a member of the Ethics Commission of the Town of Hampstead.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations, thank you.
There's only one, one Brown.
Okay, we'll get him here. He's really dressed for the occasion, too. Looks like me handing out the check last night at the fire department, my slop outfit. Okay, ordinance, any other new business first?
Here's Steve.
We'll get him at the end.
Oh, okay.
We'll just get him in a minute. So first, the ordinance is in resolutions, is the adoption of ordinance 519, which is an ordinance for the levy of taxes for the fiscal year 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Take your pick. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? An adoption of Ordinance 520, an ordinance to adopt the annual budget of the Town of Hampstead for the period of July 1, 2017, to July 30, 2018. And we'll do this by roll call, but is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call.
I was waiting, I thought you were saying something else, sorry.
No, sorry.
Councilman Unglesby?
Yes.
Councilman Rennahan?
Yes.
Councilman Rourke?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Duff?
Yes.
And then finally, the adoption of Resolution 201701, which is a resolution regarding the increase of water rates.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's good when things go smoothly, but hopefully, I gave you a summary of what's going on with the budget. Public comments, there's a few folks here. Oh, Boy Scouts. It's your turn. Stand up and tell me who you are and what troop you represent. Wait a minute.
Chris Reed, Troop 380.
Aaron Floyd, Troop 380.
And where's 380 housed, located?
Um...
Where do you have your meetings?
Wellsley Church.
Okay, just down the road. Very good. We've had a number of Boy Scouts through the years, so how far along are we in the merit badge process?
We're here for a...
You got 10, 20, 50, how many, and are you thinking about Eagle Scout? Yes? Okay, one yes, maybe two yeses. All right. And I guess one thing you learned tonight?
Well, I learned that it's not really that easy that I thought, not really easier than I thought. It was like a lot of adult stuff.
It's always good when our teenagers learn some responsibility. Yes, sir?
More complicated?
Definitely can be more complicated. It's definitely got more complicated over the years. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Sorry for putting you on the spot. Any other public comments? Doug?
I think this is our very seldom, I have a reason to call on the Police Department, but I had a reason to call a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago, and I want to commend Officer Thornton and the other officer?
Fogel.
Matt Fogel.
Matt Fogel.
Okay, Officer Fogel, they did their job very professional. They were firm, but took a fair stand, and thanks to them, my situation was handled in a very nice way. I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Steve.
And we'll get, all right, hey Steve, since you're here.
I see Vicki back there, too.
And Vicki's arrived, too?
Yep.
Come on up here. And Vicki's back here, too?
I mean, I just saw Paul field.
That's okay. I was dressed the same way last night at the Fire Department.
Formal swearing in.
Good to see you.
All right, good to see you. How you doing?
Hey, good. How are you?
Absolutely wonderful.
I've been up in the class, it was formal.
No, this we are.
All right, I'll do Steve first, because you've got two different ones here. All right. All right. I, Steve Rogers, do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Steve Rogers, do swear and affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And to support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Hampstead.
Execute the office of a, execute the office of a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Hampstead.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations. All right, Vicki, back to you. I, Vicki Watts, do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Vicki Watts, do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Town of Hampstead.
Execute the office as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the Town of Hampstead.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations.
All right.
Sorry about the...
Pictures?
I'm a teacher, I'm always looking for that.
But you get to keep this up.
Photographer's ready.
We need to sign both of them. Do I keep one? Yes.[1764.12]